The Board of Supervisors is already in session as we had an ARPA work session prior to this meeting, so I'm going to turn it over to the School Board Chair, Ms. Healy, to call her meeting to order.
All right, we want to call this to order. Do we have a motion to participate electronically?
Move to allow Dr. Warner to participate electronically.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Halsted. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk? Can you do our roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall's outside, Ms. Hahn?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
May I try to come forward?
Ms. Hall, I would like to just state for the record, Ms. Randall has a death in her family and she's out of town, which is why she's not able to participate in this meeting. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And not quite on the similar vein, but I have to leave. I'm needed at home.
Okay, so Supervisor Cohen is going to have to leave as well. Are you finished on your end? Okay, very good. All right, so we'll move on. We only have one item on the agenda today, and that is to discuss the FY 2433 Technical Review Committee recommendations and additional options via work session for the capital improvement plan. I will turn this over to Ms. Andrea Light for her presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, members of the School Board, Dr. Taylor. Excited to have you all here today to go through the CIP. Really, this is the opportunity for the School Board and the Board of Supervisors to have a discussion about what was in the Technical Review Committee's recommendation, and we have some other options that we provided to the Board on December 6th to accomplish additional projects. So this is really an opportunity for you all to speak and discuss the projects and the needs of the schools. Starting with debt capacity, we talk about debt capacity often, so debt capacity is our limitation of what we can borrow over a 10-year period. Our debt capacity increased over 147 million. We did update some of the assumptions. We went from a 3% budget increase to a 4% budget increase because we looked at the last 10 years of what the actual increase was, and it was a 4% increase. So that really grew that capacity. But in the same vein, we reduced, we increased interest rates from 5% to 5.5% due to the market, so that brought it back down a little bit. But again, an overall increase of 147 million, we have $731 million of debt capacity. So that we're all on the same page about bond referendum. During the CIP last year, there was a lot of discussion about a possible bond referendum and what that might look like for school projects, for fire and rescue projects, or other county projects. So a bond referendum, essentially, it goes to, we start in April where we determine the School Board requested projects that might not be in the CIP or that need to be, that are included, and which ones of those would be included on a bond referendum. The Board votes to authorize that in July, and then it gets added to the ballot. That gives our ability to get our voters' input, so we have our citizen response when they go and vote. And then if they vote favorably, I'm assuming here in December, we would have this meeting, which would be a discussion of moving forward with that bond referendum, and certainly we would have to have that discussion if that referendum failed. So what happens after a referendum? So if approved by the voters, then we know what the community wants. That's a really good feedback mechanism. The Board used that a few years ago to look at transportation projects and had an overwhelming support of 76%. I also looked at all the referendums on this past ballot that were for schools, for construction projects and bond issuances, and all of those passed favorably throughout the Commonwealth. So that doesn't mean that that is what will happen in Stafford County, but certainly gives us some information to rely on. So we still have to issue general obligation debt. So even if a bond referendum passes, that just means the citizens say, yes, you can go and issue this debt. That debt still has to fall within our debt capacity and our limitations. So this referendum, it's really about a mechanism of talking with the community, and I think the School Board started to do some of that work, talking about their capital needs. At the December 5th meeting, the Board asked us to look at the change in debt service from the schools' requests. So this was about 151 billion, was that it? It was a large request from schools this year, and it would equate to about 52 cents in the tax rate if all of those projects were approved within the 10 years. So I want to start with the Technical Review Committee. Now, we do have projects that we assume to be included in the CIP. For the schools, those are Hartwood High School, and then we have some school through our annual bond-funded projects. Now, we include, we, those were already started, the Hartwood and the High School, from the county's perspective. Those were already funded. We do have some projects with 100% dedicated revenue. Most of those are going to be proffers, or in the case of transportation projects, that's going to be state and federal money. So under the TRC recommendation, and remember, we're limited to what is allowed within that policy, within that debt capacity. So we ranked our projects, and we put the schools up here all together. Drew Middle School actually ranked the highest, mostly because that was, because of safety issues, and you'll see kind of where the rest of these fell. Now, what this doesn't do is align this with the School Board's request and how you requested to have these projects and the priority that the School Board put on their requests. Again, due to the limitations of TRC, this is strictly one through wherever we could get to. We were able to add in that high school bus access road. It scored 27, but it's a $5 million project, and we were able to squish it in to capacity. And then Middle School 9 and High School Number 7, knowing that those are coming, we did put some planning dollars in those out years. County projects look like this. We have a couple, Fire Stations Courthouse, and Garrisonville Road Widening, which is a transportation project. Not included in the TRC recommendation, and this is not because projects weren't, aren't necessary, it's definitely because of funding limitation. Activities in Aquatic Center, Elementary School Ferry Farm rebuild, and UMW acquisition renovation. I do want to say about the Fleet Services building, so what was proposed by the School Board, as you know, was 50% of that building. The county staff has not looked at what Fleet Services facility they would need, so we felt like this project needs some more staff-to-staff work before we completely bring this So what we do have here is we provided the Board some options. So the first option is what we just saw, so that's our status quo, TRC recommendation, if you will. So if none of our assumptions change, this is what it would look like. The second option was a 2-cent fire levy, and the third option is a 2-cent fire levy and 4-cent real estate tax increase. So funding strategy two with the fire levy, the cost is about $80 a year. It's, we're able to fund $47.2 million of fire-related projects in the 10 years, and that frees up debt capacity for additional projects. So while a fire levy doesn't necessarily impact the schools directly, it does indirectly as now we have additional debt capacity. The timeline that we provided would, to be considered, this is part of a bond referendum in November of '23, and then would begin in June '24 when we would start collecting that revenue if this is the direction the Board takes. Under this fire levy and these other two options, we did, staff took a little bit different approach than the TRC recommendation. We tried the best that we could to align the recommendations with the schools' Board's priorities. So literally, starting from one and going to as far as we could for the School Board request, and trying to put them within the 10 years, add this to the School Board requested. Now, we have Drew Middle School in there, but Elementary School 19 could be placed before Drew Middle School. So those are some options to consider as your discussions go forward today and throughout the CIP process. We did remove the rebuilds for Falmouth, Stafford, and Grafton Elementary. Those were lower on the School Board's priority, trying to fit some stuff in. And then we replaced projects with Rising Star, and as we go, you'll see how these look. So for the schools, and we passed out some information, also, these are really long sheets. So the first one is the TRC recommendation. If you're a spreadsheet person, like me, this would be your-
You're a spreadsheet person?
I am, I am. But you might like this, so you can look to the last page, that's where the school projects will be, and you can kind of see the layout that we have, if you will. So in the fires levy, we were able to add Elementary School Number 20. We were able to add the North Stafford Fine Arts Wing in renovation in addition. And I will say, the TRC did go to North Stafford to look at the Fine Arts Wing, and the teacher there, and I don't remember his name, did a fantastic job of giving us a tour in really what those needs are. He did an excellent job, and we really appreciated his time because there were children everywhere. And, yeah. There, there-
She's a spreadsheet person.
There was, I mean, he was busy with kids, so we appreciated his time. And then we were able to add the Rising Star replacement.
Can I ask a quick question? I remember I was close to you. Going back to that one, I thought with North Stafford, and then maybe on this occasion with Upper Hill and I, we had conversations that you guys were even thinking about doing the Fine Arts at our station in addition, and you were thinking about maybe rebuilding North Stafford? And doing that, I mean, am I mistaken? Okay.
It's currently on our CIP right now to have that project. You are going to have to look at a North Stafford replacement in the not-too-distant future, it wouldn't be a part of this CIP, but you would have to look at it in either the tail end of the next CIP or the early part of two CIPs down the road. So you're 20 years out from a North Stafford replacement, but it is time to start thinking about the timeline for retiring North Stafford. So that's definitely a part of the conversation, but there are needs at North Stafford that are pretty dramatic in the Fine Arts Wing, and that's why it's still a part of our CIP.
No, I'm not debating that. I just thought it was, I felt the timeline was much quicker because of, Embry Mill hasn't even finished building out, and then no High School 6th is not even here, so I thought maybe North Stafford was going to hit its capacity potentially sooner and changing, but it's okay. All right, thank you.
And you can see the items in bold are the ones that have made any changes, and so there's significant impact, of course, to all the fire station rebuilds and the joint training center logistics and fleet for fire and rescue, and no other changes for county projects. Again, these are the projects not included. Like we talked about, the elementary school rebuilds have been removed to really focus on some of that capacity. So strategy three, fire levy of 2 cents and a real estate increase of 4 cents. So this is going to be an average to our taxpayers, about $240 a year to get to this level of funding. So there's significant improvements in the schools. Drew Middle School can be moved up two years to start that replacement in fiscal year '26. Elementary School 19, Elementary, I do want to point out, Elementary School 18 is in all of these models, starting in fiscal year '24. But this moves up, Elementary School 19 moves up two years, 20 moves up two years. Rising Star is able to move up three years, and then adding the Public Day School, although that is still on the tail end of the CIP. So I think this looks like a significant improvement for, as compared to the other two models. And again, we tried to go in the order of the School Board, and really, it's a one-through-20 exercise. What improved on the county side for this was to move the courthouse up five years, and then there's no other changes, as we'd already addressed all the fire stations. And Garrisonville Road is a transportation project, so that funding and that timing is really kind of set. And then again, these are the projects that are included. So this is really the beginning of the CIP process. The CIP process here in Stafford is about a 16-month process, so we're, I think we're actually, staff is about in the middle of our process, but this is the beginning of us working with the Board and the School Board to talk about what this looks like. December 13th, we'll have a CIP work session with the Board of Supervisors to ask their direction on what should come back in the proposed CIP, and that will come back on March 7th. There's a joint Board and School Board meeting on March 21st before the tax rate is set, so that's another opportunity for the Boards to get together and discuss what was in that proposed CIP and how that will or will not meet the needs of the schools. And we have a follow-up that's planned in case that goes long. We do have public hearings on April 4th and adoption on April 18th. So that's all I had to provide to you today, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Gary, thank you very much, Ms. Light. I'll defer to my colleagues first to see if you guys have any comments or statements that you'd like to make before we open up the floor to the School Board. Supervisor Allen?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I promised I had something. The 4 cents, the assumption does not include the rest of the county needs, right? So that's additional 4 cents on top of the tax rate.
And by the rest of the county needs-
Meaning like the rest of the budget, like, is that, right? That's additional 4 cents to whatever he's going to propose in April.
Correct, and we have plugged that 4 cents as a capital revenue.
Oh, okay. And so, other questions? How did you get to the 4 cent? Like, why not increments of 2 pennies? I'm just curious.
So we looked at 2 cents and 4 cents. 2 cents really didn't make that big of a difference. There wasn't that much of an incremental change. It wasn't until we got to 4 cents that we really saw that there could be an impact on the CIP.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Young was next, and then Supervisor Gary.
Ms. Light, so I recall North Star being on the list. May I ask what happened to it?
North Star-
Additional-
Rising Star, it continues to be on the list, and that's the replacement. It was the old-gale Middle School.
No, I know, I know what it is. I know North Star. I named North Star, so I know what I'm talking about here. I'm looking at Ms. Healy about the room that was supposed to expand, North Star. So the reason why I'm asking about that is, when you rebuild Rising Star, where are we planning on putting these kids?
Do you want to ask another question? I believe they're going to stay in the current structure until the new one is built. Is that not the case?
Are we talking about, once the building is complete, where will those kids attend?
When you-
Or while you're rebuilding it?
So when you're saying you rebuild, you're not using that same land, it's going to be somewhere else?
So we're looking at options there. We've looked at options of building on the same site. We've also looked at options of maybe switching it with the Drew Middle School. So if we rebuild Drew Middle School, we can do it on the Rising Star site, and vice versa, and that provides you an opportunity to actually keep both schools operating, and you build on maybe the athletic fields at Drew, and then you can co-locate until you then turn around and you build at the new site, or vice versa. We'd have to work on that.
The only reason why I was mentioning that, because we had talked about North Star having more room already and expanding that, since there are going to be more kids coming in Garrisonville and that area anyway, and be able to move them there temporarily and then while you fix that, but-
And when we rebuild Rising Star, we would build it with expanded capacity.
And the campus at Rising Star is substantially larger than North Star. Even if we doubled the capacity of North Star, we would not be able to put all of the Rising Star students in North Star even temporarily. So you have a good point, but doing the building construction in a way where you're optimizing the space that we already have, it saves a ton of money, and also lets you keep your buildings open while you're doing construction safely.
Supervisor Van Rich, like saving money?
Just not on Christmas trees. Supervisor Gary?
Never let us live it down.
See what I put up with? Well, you guys put up with me, too. My question was just on Stafford Elementary and that we're not doing a renovation. I'm assuming there would be a new elementary school then, and my question is, then where is that going?
As we have it scoped and the School Board's adopted CIP, we would recommend a replacement and a replacement on-site on the property.
Okay.
We would do a construction. When it is time to replace that building, its useful life is coming to an end within the next 10 years, along with Grafton Village and Falmouth, and at the end of that 10-year period, also Ferry Farm. And we would recommend for all of those buildings to construct on the property and utilize the same strategy of saving a little bit of money by not purchasing new land, but constructing on the available land on the property while the school is still open.
So what kind of capacity would that, would you be able to add with that, as it is already pretty overcrowded, as you know, and the site there is, you know, pretty limited with the neighborhoods right up against it?
We would add 233 seats.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to add that that's going to be probably 10 years from now. If, in a perfect world, if it's when we wanted to open it. But we have been discussing Elementary School 18 and Elementary School 19, and while we don't have an official vote, we have generally been discussing 18 as being in the vicinity of the new high school.
That was more what I was asking.
In the southern end of the county.
Okay, that helped, too.
And then we've been discussing 19 being in the central part of the county, which would be along the corridor where Stafford L is, because that is an area that has significant need. Right now, our southern end is, dare I say, even needier because we've got trailers already down there to accommodate the people, and we're going to have to be adding more and more until we get these 18 and 19 built.
Okay, well, just keep me posted on that and how that develops. Thank you.
Supervisor Baumke?
Okay, so I need a little bit more information. I know we talked about this at the, over at Brook Point. So I saw that you took out the three elementaries, so help me understand again, because I don't think the public gets this. When we redid Grafton, and I know I sound like a broken record, Falmouth, Grafton, and Stafford L, I remember physically walking in those buildings, and we took them down to the studs. We replaced all the HVAC, did everything over. It was almost like a rebuild, except for, you know, the beams, we even put new roofs on, and the bricks. So help me understand, you know, I'm on a state advisory board looking at capital construction of new schools with the School Board members and people from VSBA, and I'm hearing about all these other school problems in the Commonwealth, which we know are great compared to Stafford County. So I don't understand why we have to rebuild them. Can somebody educate me, please?
Absolutely. I would first like to reiterate what Ms. Healy said, which is, that is not remotely the house that's on fire right now. The house that's on fire is absolutely our seat deficit, and the projected seat deficit and 115 classroom deficit in the next three years, and we absolutely need to address those needs first. As far as Falmouth, Grafton, Stafford L, and Ferry Farm go, one of the things that we've consistently heard from our constituents is, why aren't you planning ahead? And why aren't you thinking about our existing infrastructure? These buildings, even though recently renovated, and one that's going through a renovation right now, and have had mixed renovation results, that's for sure.
Absolutely, yep.
And we need to plan for the end of their useful life. And by thinking ahead and by mapping out some likely scenarios of when this could be, perhaps it's pushed a year, perhaps it's pulled up a year, that may depend on the project. We're totally understanding of that, and that's why it is on our priority list. But the projects that are overdue and the projects that require additional capacity and to manage growth, those are really the crux of the Board's target and focus right now.
Okay, and I certainly understand that and appreciate it. I think it might be in all of our best interest, just because the community doesn't understand as much as what we understand sitting here at this table. And I think that if we were going to put a bond issue out before the voters, we might not want to include those three or four schools on the list, because I think it really complicates things, and I, it, I really think it just kind of muddies the waters, if you will, because right now, people want to focus on, like you said, what part of our house is on fire right now. Those are definitely things that need to be taken into consideration, but maybe they don't really surface for the next three or four years. Just a thought.
Agreed.
I have a question also about Rising Star and about Hartwood. When you put up Hartwood on the very first slide, is that a Hartwood that is going to go next to the new high school, or is that a rebuild of Hartwood or a renovation of Hartwood? Because I think we need to make that very clear. And then my other question is about Rising Star. That's the current Gary Meltzer's complex, right? We, did I hear you correctly? We're going to knock that building down after the new Rising Star is built. How many children are going to be housed in that building, and at what ages, for $71 million?
I'll take that one, too. We'll start with Hartwood. We absolutely advocate for the replacement of Hartwood Elementary School. Do we think that that's the best bet right now? Probably not, and the reason for that is seat capacity. And we also think that a Hartwood Elementary School could go closer to Hartwood Elementary School as it is right now, as the urban service area expands in that area and we time that project accordingly. The School Board is advocating for the construction of a new Elementary School 18 to go in the southern part of the county. Lots of discussion can be had in closed session with both School Boards about land acquisition and land placement. We believe that the south is the place for that project, and there are certainly some logical places that you might presume might be a good fit for that, and that Elementary School 19 and that new construction take the place of where you have 18 on your list, and Hartwood assume the place of where you have 20, because we know that that project needs to get done. But again, you're running into a seat deficit, and you're running into a classroom deficit, and if you can ballpark it more or less at about 50 classrooms per elementary school, in three years, you're going to have 115 classroom deficit. in three years, you're going to have 115 classroom deficit. Well, that's more than two elementary schools. So, you know you need additional seats and you know you need additional spaces. So, prioritizing the seat count, prioritizing the classroom count is maybe the smarter bet and the more cost-effective bet, as well as being able to do all of the things that we all want to get accomplished, which is a rebuild of Hartwood Elementary School, a new construction in the south, a new construction in the central area to relieve pressure in the Embry Mill Zone, relieve pressure in the Stafford L Zone, and also accomplish some of these other things. So, that seems to be, that's the direction that we are advocating for the Board of Supervisors to consider, is a movement and a jockeying of projects in order to maximize your seat capacity and to maximize your classroom capacity at cost.
I just wanted to add that our view of Elementary School 18 in the southern end would also provide some immediate relief to Hartwood when it opened. That is our plan and our expectation.
Supervisor Allen?
Thank you, ma'am chairman. Yeah, I have several questions. So, the first one is for Ms. Light. The four cents on the real estate, that's going to be for over a 10-year period, right? Okay. And then the second one is about the capacity issue for the school board. So, I'm going to respectfully, respectfully, I can't say the word right now, disagree with the adopter a little bit on not being as concerned about the schools that are designed to be rebuilt in the future. For me personally, I think it needs to be very much in the back of our minds, not in the forefront because we have needs. But I think it's something that we should consider because with our bond referendum for our roads, people have, some, people made assumptions that we were going to be able to tackle everything. And very quickly, that wasn't the case. So, I don't want people to say, "Well, we earmarked $400 million, $450, whatever the number will be, but you have to fix these schools." And then, in four years, we have to come back to them and say, "Oh, we need another $400 million to fix these other schools." So, I think we ought to make the voters aware of the real needs instead of telling them what they want to hear. Like, we shouldn't be sugarcoating it. Tell them everything, put it all out there and let them make the decision. Because, tell them, because I'm telling you now, as a taxpayer, I'm going to assume that that's going to take care of all of our issues. So, I should not see you come back to me in four years as a taxpayer and say, "I'm going to raise your taxes because we have additional schools that need about $400 million worth of repairs and renovations and replacement." So, I think we all seem to be cognizant of the projects that are due to be fixed, such as Wide Water Elementary. Because for me, as much as you say we have time, capacity is going to drive that. So, in five years, for example, if Wide Water hits its capacity, we should be planning now for that replacement and not wait till the capacity is hit so that we're not, you know, buttressing all these obstacles with rising costs, tax rate issues and all that. So, you know, that's something I think that as collective that we need to be mindful of.
Is that it? I thought you said you had a couple of questions. That wasn't bad. Supervisor Er, Young?
Real quick. In terms of burning in your house, I never thought the high school was one. I didn't vote for the high school, but that was just me. I lost that battle, right? But I was more concerned of the elementary school. I always knew and thought that the elementary schools were going to be an issue that we needed, that especially in Garrisonville. Wherever you put it to alleviate that press on Garrisonville. And definitely the middle school that drew with mold is on top of my list. But, so that was my comment. But my question was, I know you have dates to these schools. What about the acquirement of the lands? Did you mean? Oh, okay.
Well, Dr. Young, you point out some really important points. The first point that I will reiterate is, these are not our suggested dates.
Ooh.
Our timeline is a lot more aggressive than this.
Okay.
And that the school board's adopted CIP is a lot more aggressive in terms of project completion with the overdue projects that they identified. For example, we would not recommend that Elementary School 18 or 19 open any later than the fall of 2026.
Okay, so then I have a question for Ms. Light. Why are we showing, why are we showing this? And I understand that we went through the T R C. But, if I recall, when I was on the school board, the T R C did not speak for the school board how they look at their needs. And so, I was wondering, at one point in time, I did ask the two teams, the school board as well as the county side, to come up with some kind of solution where you all see eye to eye, that you could come at one list and say, "Yes, we agreed on this list." Like, right now, they're not agreeing on the list that we have. So, how do we resolve that issue, if it is an issue? I'm just asking.
Dr. Young, I think that we're in this room to do that tonight.
Okay, well, I'll shut up and then we let's do it.
And so, you bring up a really good point about land and our pursuit of land. There's definitely some identified targets that we've been looking at. Some mention of property near the high school, property in the central part of the county. There is a process at the county level that we work through in a committee to help identify land. And I'll ask Ms. Light or Mr. Fulmer if you want to opine on that further. But that would be a part of a land acquisition that the school board and the county would engage in and probably do so in closed session.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys. So, before, I know every supervisor's gotten an opportunity to go. Supervisor English, you haven't spoken, but do you have anything?
Yeah, the new high schools, the new high school, I'm sorry, the new high school. The new elementary schools that are being built now around the nation or whatever, what is their capacity? What are they building? What numbers are they looking at when you're building a new elementary school? Now, I'm not saying here's that, I'm just saying as a template, what's the numbers on?
Typical elementary school is going to be around 6 to 7 to 800 students. We advocate actually for building a little bit more cost-effective than that and building north of 900. Our target would be designing for somewhere in the 960 range to accommodate for more students under one roof. We're kind of in a situation right now where it would be great to have a 600-student school. But for the dollars, the return on investment for us is a lot better to build a little bit bigger. We figured out that we can manage larger elementary schools. And so, that's our approach at this time.
And what is Hartwood Elementary School? What's their seat capacity? And then, and what's Drew's?
Hartwood's 571 and Drew's is 650.
That's it, chairman?
Okay. Just really quickly, and I know Supervisor Allen had one more comment or question. I think what makes these meetings useful is if you got, we try to put ourselves in your situation as a school board. Like, we hear what you're saying. We can't fix the issues of poor planning from previous boards in the past. We, just like you guys can't fix poor planning from board, school board members in the past, right? So, we're always, I think right now, this board is very focused on solution-oriented approaches. What we're, we also are kind of faced with and we ask is, you guys look at this CIP, to put yourselves in our situation where you're looking at the financial aspects of it. We have a lot of needs on our end with public safety, building, fire stations, all kinds of things, right? But, also keeping in mind that we have a very diverse population in Stafford County. We have a lot of people who make a lot of money and we have a lot of people that don't make a lot of money. And I think Andrea did a really great job of kind of showing what the average increase would be based on this essential, this would technically be a six-cent tax increase, which you said it was approximately $240 increase. That's on your average home price, which is what, $350,000? Is that still the, about the average? So, just keep that in mind as school board members, that you're looking at, that's $240 for that price of house. If you have a $400,000 house, that cost is going to go up significantly. So, I just wanted to make that comment and then sort of dive into what I feel as a board member would be helpful coming out of this meeting. Dr. Taylor, you already hit on it a little bit. Like, if we just focused on this side specifically, so then the board knows that, okay, outside of anything else in our budget or any other needs, you're looking at a six-cent tax increase, which is a $240 increase on the average price of a home, just to move forward with these things this year. What on here do you agree with, disagree with, or would drastically need to change? Because in the past, we've had such varying opinions because the two boards were not willing to put themselves in each other's position and agree that you might not get everything that you want. It's like a Christmas list. But what is it that you have, that you absolutely want and need right now? Now, I know you guys will say everything, but we really need to work together on figuring out what kind of bite at the apple can we take this year? And if we move to bond referendum, I personally, my personal feeling is that I would like to put as many things on the referendum as possible so that the voters can decide. So, then we unequivocally would make the statement, like, this is what they said they wanted. So, that helps us in the future to say, "Okay, this is what the tax rate needs to be" and it be very clear and concise to the taxpayers, kind of to Supervisor Allen's point, as to what they're getting and what they're not getting with the bond referendum. Because I don't think people understand that a bond referendum, they just think it's like free money. They don't realize that, no, your taxes actually go up. Like, the people complaining about their personal property tax bill right now are not realizing that their taxes went up because they voted on the bond referendum for the roads. And so, that has to be very clear to people. Like, you're consciously making a choice. And then our board has to figure out, is it the real estate tax that's going to go up? Or is it the personal property tax that's going to go up in order to finance these bonds to pay for the schools? And that all needs to be a part of the message in the bond referendum. So, I know that was a lot, but I think it's really good for, this is one of the first times we're really getting to the meat of a lot of these issues as two boards. But I'd really like to hear your thoughts as a board on what on this slide needs to change so that we can be unified in an approach moving forward. Because I swear to God, in the spring, if you guys start talking bad about us and it goes back to this back and forth that we're not listening to you, I'm going to lose it. Because that is not the way we have had this relationship for, at least since I've been on the board. So, anyway, I'm going to let, I'm going to let her go real quick and then I know you.
Yes, I, we don't want you to lose it, Ms. Van Nieuwshuisen.
Nobody wants me to lose it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Allen.
Yeah, I just have some quick questions that will help in you guys answering our, getting us to what she's saying is. For me, the first one was, can we have a tax increase presentation, Ms. Light? Did you consent or consent to us of what the school board actually wanted? Like, their list versus what this is? So that I can see what their, the increase in, what their actual?
A 52-cent tax increase.
52 cents over the 10 years.
So, five, so, so 5.2, 5.2 cents a?
No, 52 cents.
Each year?
It's going up.
10 cents.
Yeah, almost, somewhere between 0.50 cents every year. Yes. This is the increase.
So, you're asking for a 10-cent increase?
Every year, for the next 10 years.
Okay. And then the other one is, what assumptions did you guys make, Ms. Light, when it relates to the timeline that we're going by, that the two and the four cents? Were you guys doing it based on so that we were within our debt capacity?
Yes, absolutely. We're staying within the debt capacity.
Okay. And I'm, and the last question is, I'm interested in learning about the, I mean, I know this is a major part, but I'm interested in the staffing part of this because that's going to be a significant increase as well that we're going to have to consider to staff all these new, I mean, these increases, so. But yeah.
Okay. Ms. Healy?
All right, I'm going to circle back to what I think was your first comment. And that was what we, you suggested what we want. We're saying this is what we need. Now, we need to focus on what we need now. Some of these are 10 years from now, within the 10 years. And all of us have been involved in these CIPs, they're living documents, they change every year. But what we've been asking for, and I think we have a consistent request here, is for Elementary School 18, Elementary School 19 to be built together because we think, I'm sorry, did somebody say something? Elementary School 18 and Elementary School 19 to be built together because we think there can be significant financial savings by building them together. And Dr. Taylor can address that, you know, more detailed if you, if you want. And to be followed by the Hartwood rebuild. And as I mentioned earlier, Elementary School 18 will provide some immediate relief to Hartwood, but we're still going to have to rebuild Hartwood. And when we rebuild Hartwood, we will be adding several hundred seats of capacity. Those are our first and most critical needs right now. We identified Drew, we earlier identified Drew as our number one priority. But after looking at the situation with the elementary schools, with the students coming in, with the increased needs within the schools, the number of classrooms we need, we changed our CIP. We amended it to put these elementary schools first ahead of Drew. There's no question that Drew needs to be rebuilt. It's been needed to be rebuilt for some time. But the first thing that we wanted to talk about, that we talked about at the last time we met, and this has been our theme, is Elementary School 18, Elementary School 19, and the Hartwood rebuild. We had wanted to talk to you at this meeting, so perhaps this is a good time to open this discussion, about substituting Elementary School 18, a brand-new school, with a capacity of 960?
964.
964 seats for the Hartwood rebuild. Because Hartwood rebuild was approved by your board. I'm not sure what that basis was because I wasn't a party to it. It wasn't part of our recommendation. It wasn't a recommendation of the T R C. But you approved it and we're asking you to let us substitute a new school. And that school would go in the south. If you look at our schools, and Mrs. Baumke is very familiar with the schools in the south, we have trailers at Rocky Run, we have trailers at Conway. The reason we have trailers at Conway is because we are bussing children down from 17 down to Conway.
I'm sure.
Hold on, let's.
So, this, this new school in the south is going to relieve this overcrowding as well as relieve, some immediate relief for Hartwood.
I just wanted to under, yes, thank you. I just wanted to understand then, in the meantime, what are we doing for Hartwood? What is the expense to get the septic issues corrected so that we can continue to use it? Because obviously, that's a concern. So, what does that look like if that were to happen?
Well, we put, I think several years ago, we put what, almost quarter, three-quarters of a million dollars? Mrs. Young was on the board, Dr. Chase remembers. We put almost three-quarters of a million dollars into this septic system at Hartwood. And we were told that that should help us for, you know, 10 years, you know, to come. So, we, it's not that we don't want to rebuild Hartwood. We want to rebuild Hartwood, but we think the need is greater to have a new school with more capacity.
So, I understand, but aren't there current issues there with that school? So, what are we doing to fix that in the meantime? So, maybe we put money in, but like, if we're not going to, I think Dr. Taylor has something to say.
I think that issue has to be addressed.
So, what are we going to do?
The most recent issues that they've had have been addressed, fixed, and repaired. I will say that as long as we continue to fill that school, it is going to have pressure, like, as you would expect.
More use, more problems.
The capacity in large part is limited based on the septic system as well as the walls that surround it. It's an aged school. It needs to be replaced. We advocate for it to be replaced. But when you're looking at the number of classrooms that are going to be deficit in a very short period of time, it's kind of counterbalancing, you know, how, what do you need? And well, you really need seats first and then you need to address your infrastructure. To Mrs. Healy's point about bundling projects, there is a cost savings to doing this work. And Elementary School 18, Elementary School 19, and Hartwood having a similar design and a similar construction timeline all lend themselves to additional cost savings.
We've had, not to interrupt you, but so you don't have to be redundant, we've had these discussions and I trust that you understand what you're doing with those things. So, I'm just trying to understand in the meantime. Is it a, is it a capacity reduction issue that will help the septic issues to not continue to resurface?
It will help tremendously.
And, and you would be able to address that with us?
It, it would, it would tremendously help.
So I just want to comment on a couple of things too, just in terms of the Hartwood rebuild and 18 or whatever. But so let's just look at the county as a whole. And Crystal, to your point, you know, we are, we should be past the point that the cart has been in front of the horse for years now. And so we have the opportunity to flip that around now, and I think that it's good to see that we're willing to take it. For, for the entire county though, our capacity issues are almost to the crisis point. Because we are struggling to deal with filling in the vacancies that we have to provide manageable classroom sizes for each of our kids. We've got the social and emotional learning loss for our kids from COVID. But it's beyond that, the higher capacity of the kids in the school as we're looking at the behavior issues. Like these kids missed major monumental growth. What do you call them? Milestones, thank you, milestones in their lives. And that school teaches them. And so we don't have that opportunity now. And so what we've done now is we've taken these kids who, who haven't had the opportunity to have that, that, and we're placing twice the amount of them into one room. And so for me, that's been the push and the reality. We can decompress Hartwood Elementary School and hopefully bring that school to a lifespan of a couple of years. Where if we build elementary school 18 and we, and we pull kids from Hartwood and from Rocky Run, if we can get rid of those trailers, you know, there's your cost. I know we're moving them, we'd be moving them to other places. But at the end of the day, this is multifaceted to me. The capacity issue isn't just about decompressing Hartwood. It is really about the fact that we can't provide, we can't guarantee safe environments for our kids anymore because there's too many kids to control. There's so many variables that are impacting each of the systems at this point. I'm not talking about, we know in 10 years we'll be right back in this boat if we continue to grow at the pace that we're growing, right? We'll still need more schools. I'm not sure where we'll put them, maybe we build up, I don't know. But at the end of the day, we're, yeah, we're seeing that, that we're, we're literally at the point where if we put another kid in another seat, like I know Hartwood, they've used every, every closet, everything they can think of that will be a, that could act as a classroom for them. I feel like for Stafford County in 2022, that's just unacceptable. But, but to decompress that school system, and this really did come out in our budget CIP and talking with the community, that most of the families there want the Hartwood rebuild as well. But what they're really looking for is a manageable school building, something that where everyone can function safely. Let me just speak to things that Ms. Allen brought up that I think are, are also worthy of us really noting here, which is as we move forward and some, and considering the money. You know, in 10 years, we're gonna have what, two new schools, hopefully or three new elementary schools? And then these other schools that are 20 and 30 years old are gonna become almost, we're gonna have a bigger equity issue there, right? Because look at what our one elementary school that was recently rebuilt, and then look at Hartwood next to that. Like, there is definitely an educate, you know, there's definitely an internal field difference there. And so that's where we'll end up if we don't start considering that we're gonna need to rebuild some of these schools. Because the, the changes that are coming aren't gonna stop in terms of learning environments and what we learn and what we know and what we may need. So I, I think we need to look at rebuilding our schools at the life of the building, but more so because times change. Things change. Like, look at the Hartwood building. Like, when I went to Hartwood one time and I walked into the office and said that there's a little bathroom right here, I'm like, what kind of flushing system is that? Like, it's 19, you know, 60 something in there. That's a big difference to when I go to Moncur and I see the outside place that I love over there. But anyway, so I definitely think it becomes an issue of if we really do, and we do have to educate the public on it. The public has to understand, if you're gonna come to Stafford County and expect the best, that does come with a cost. And I hate the, as a taxpayer, I'm like, oh, why? But I also know I came here because the schools were awesome. And so if I'm coming as a taxpayer and I'm making a decision to come to a county and settle here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find it worthwhile to pay the extra amount to have the school system. Because that's what communities are really about. They're really about building our kids and, and helping them thrive when they leave us later on. And to the other point Ms. Allen made, that I'm, I mean, we do have to think now about, we have to entice teachers to build, to teach in our school systems. And a big part of that is gonna come from, I hate to say it, but shiny new schools that look pretty and have gadgets. It's just the way it is. So, so there's no dollar being spent here or being asked for that is being, not being used for every taxpayer's benefit.
Thank you for that. And I just want to note really quickly and then move on.
Supervisor Baumke is next, and then I'd like to let the school board be able to talk.
It kind of deviated into a different thing, so I just wanted to say one quick thing. I'll be very brief. Is that okay? And, and that was my point. I, I asked one thing. I was trying to understand the dynamics of how this would work. And I know that this kind of accumulates because there is a fear that we're just trying to grab all the money back and go, no, you can only have this. And so I want to try to work through that. And I, I believe and trust that you guys are trying to do the right thing. You can't outcreate, you can't create your way out of this. And we, we do have to fund a lot of this and, and get it done quickly. So I just want to say that, like, if, if I'm asking questions, like, I'm just trying to understand like how you're doing, what you're doing. I believe that we need to do this, but thank you.
But Ms. Hines, may I just make one comment? Ms. Gary, I appreciate your questions because just as elementary school 18 will be providing some immediate relief to Hartwood, elementary school 19 would be providing significant relief to Stafford L., to Anthony Burns, to Whining Creek, and.
Park Ridge.
Park Ridge, you know, they're, they're, that's in the, in the central part of the county. That's what 19 is going to provide relief for. And our request to build those simultaneously would significantly help many portions of the county as well as saving that money. And we're talking about saving millions of dollars if we do them together. You can just look at those figures. Between 18 and 19, because of a few years, you're going up, what, 13 million dollars, you know, in a cost. If you build them together, you're not going to have that inflation. So thank you for raising those questions.
Supervisor Baumke?
So as you guys know, coming from the school board, I'm a big supporter of the schools. But one of the things that I make a lot of my decisions on is data. And I look at this, and I was looking at this last night preparing for the meeting today. And when was it that you guys did redistricting? Last year. Can you believe the numbers that are on this sheet? It's like we didn't even redistrict. The question is that we all have to ask each other is, did we redistrict the way we should have redistricted? Because I know some of the stories of why some schools are more crowded than others. But unfortunately, we're gonna need, and this is where the rubber meets the road, right here. We need to take some of these kids from Drew, anybody that's a dark green, we gotta remove those certain children, and they gotta get moved over to Dixon. Dixon's sitting at 819 and they've got capacity of 1100? That's just not fair to Drew Middle School when they're all right in there together. And I know there are children that we don't want to move for certain reasons, but is it fair to? Anyway, is it fair, as Rotary says, is it fair to all concern? The same thing up here when you look at Conway, Hampton Oaks, Hartwood, obviously, Park Ridge, and Rocky Run. And then you have schools like Widewater that are, and I realize they're way up there, 595. You know, some of these numbers, Garrisonville Elementary, and, I mean, the list goes on. Have we considered spot redistricting or doing more than we did last year? So we don't have to put relocatables at certain schools. And I know it's a painful discussion, but you guys got elected to do, and so did we, to make hard decisions. It's not fun.
So that document is one year out of date.
Okay, then why is it in the material?
I don't know. That was, I don't think we supplied that to you. And so I can tell you that absolutely Dixon Smith had room for Drew redistricting. And we did redistrict students from Drew to Dixon Smith. And we'll have to do so again in the near future. But to keep operations at Drew where you're still able to provide a middle school program, because Drew is such a small school, you don't really want to go much below 600. So them operating at a high level of capacity does make sense for them programmatically to a certain degree. At the elementary level, we do have a couple of schools that have capacity, one of which is Rock Hill Elementary School. And then there are an additional 30 seats right now at Margaret Brent, but that's it. There is, we have reached the point where there are no more, there are no more schools to redistrict to other than those two schools. Margaret Brent has a very large attendance zone. It, it is cost prohibitive to extend that attendance zone much larger because it is the size of a high school attendance zone in terms of its transportation network and how wide it is. You've got bus routes that could go over an hour. Widewater, as you pointed out, is definitely a little bit out of the way, but it is also filling up. And so, you know, we're not looking necessarily at just one year's time horizon, but also looking at the next three years. And if we redistrict students, the last thing we want to do is redistrict them to a place that then we would either have to redistrict them again or we're redistricting them to a place where then we know we're gonna have to add trailers. Unfortunately, we're, we're kind of there. And, and we're at the place right now where the, the couple of schools that we have are a little bit on the frontier, Rock Hill and Margaret Brent, in terms of their limited capacity. And when you're talking about capacity, we're talking about 20, 30 kids capacity, not the level of redistricting that we would need to do for some of our overcrowded schools like a Park Ridge or some of the other areas that are really substantially overcrowded because they're, we're just running out of space to redistrict them to.
Okay, so thank you very much, Dr. Taylor. I'm sorry I asked that question because obviously the data in front of me is not accurate. What I would ask is that could you and Doc, you and Randy, please have more conversations so that we have accurate information in front of us? Because it sounds like we have like 42 seats in, in the entire county. And if that's the case, then, then now I understand why the house is on fire. Because that's not the picture that is shown right here, and that is not the story. So anybody that has looked at these materials, they're getting the same story that I just said to you.
Yeah, and, and we definitely have more than 42 seats. It, it's that they're not all in the right spot where it's convenient for us to do something about it, unfortunately. Because we could absolutely redistrict people to Ferry Farm, and we could absolutely redistrict people to Rock Hill, but we would cross over and pass four different schools to do it.
But we've done that in years past. We did that with Gale Middle School. Remember Sarah? Gale Middle School kids, and, and they broke things out very separately. And the same thing with Grafton Village, doesn't have very many children right now.
Grafton Village is full. The juice may not be worth the squeeze to do that. And, and to think about it from this construct as well, you, you also have your operating expense to consider in terms of transportation, in terms of providing continuity of services. And so it, it may not be worth it to aggravate your constituents to have them go over four school zones in some cases, to go to a different school where there's an empty seat when, you know, you, you have some logical things that you can do, like construct schools to alleviate some of the growth. And, and we're there, you know? And, and I don't think that this was something that we didn't see coming, but we're, we're now here. So now that we're at the decision point, it's now time for action.
Okay, so Dr. Young, you had a question?
Yeah, actually a comment, Madam Chair. So we could continue to play musical chairs, right? And redistricting is painful. Yes, that's what we got voted in for to make difficult decision. But when you have yearly growth, and while you're trying to move children in these seats that are open, and we are looking at capacity, you have to leave room for the growth in the upcoming years, be it 10 or 20. And, and we, we're not gonna get there if we continue to redistrict and move the kids. Besides, you know, you know, the parents being upset. I was one of those parents at one point in time. It, it's not about just upsetting the parents, it's about doing the right thing for the future of Stafford County. So we could have more people moving in at some point in time and saying, hey, I'd love to move to Stafford County. And we want to do for both. Not only for those individuals that are by right to come in and, and have a seat at the table at any time because they don't go through the same process for Planned Communities Goals on East Side of 95, where we're saying, okay, we don't want any growth because, yeah, they're gonna bring their kids. So across the board, I think we still need to look at Stafford County as a whole, look at the, the land that is purchasable or free or whatever the case might be, and put the schools where we need to and anticipate that it's gonna grow. Stafford County is going to grow.
Your musical chairs analogy is, is perfect because we're running out of chairs. And at the cost of less than $1 a day to the average taxpayer, I think that there's a lot of citizens that would take you up on that deal.
So here's what I think would be more productive, because I think we could all go around the room and make comments about how we need to build schools. I think we need to look at the document that we have here. I know that Ms. Healy mentioned moving up elementary 18 and 19. But I think what would be helpful for me as a supervisor is for you guys to say, okay, like if you put yourselves in our seat, what tax rate, what kind of increase would you be comfortable selling to our community? And what would that look like? Because, you know, this is what our staff came up with, a 6 cent tax increase, and this is what we could do here. So that is ultimately where we have to agree. We have to be able to have four votes on this board to buy in to a tax increase or even to, to authorize a bond referendum to provide a 6 cent tax increase. But we still are not even aligned on what that would look like because your ideas may end up it being a 12 cent tax increase. So I think that's, in my opinion, that's where we could probably spend the best use of our time is looking at what's important to you guys and then looking at how that impacts the tax rate in totality so that we can move forward. So the only things I've heard from you guys so far is move up elementary 18 and 19. But I haven't heard you, would you, would you move something else down to offset that tax increase? Or will you tell the residents, oh, you have to pay four more cents? So now we're asking for a 10 cent tax increase.
Okay, well, we're also circling around, asking to substitute elementary 18 for the Hartwood rebuild. That's our first request. That's our first request.
So how would that look?
What is the cost difference between the Hartwood rebuild and elementary school 18?
They're virtually the same.
Okay, so that would not cost the county much at all. That's what we're asking for because.
One quick question, did you keep that on there? Because it's not listed. That would have been helpful to list, like what's currently approved in the CIP?
It's approved starting in fiscal year '23. Hartwood is.
Right, it's today, that's approved. And, and that would work for us because we are already working on a design. We're looking at land, and we want to be ready to hit the ground with construction on elementary school 18. But we're gonna need your approval because you approved Hartwood.
Yeah.
On your own. All right, so that's the number one request. I think that's what, what we've agreed on. And when I finish, Ms. Sigmund wants to, to add something. That's our first request, substitute elementary school 18 for Hartwood. The second request is elementary school 19. Now, if you look at those two numbers, elementary school 18 is 58.8 million. And that's in the range because that's, that's FY '24. Is that correct, Mr. Fulmer? So that's, that's an accurate figure. We would like to build elementary school 19 at the same time as 18. And I'm assuming that it would be no more than 58.8 because we're thinking we're gonna save many millions of dollars by doing them simultaneously.
And hold on, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but is somebody on our side writing this down? Okay.
I'm not saying anything I haven't said many times before. We're not asking for the Drew Middle School replacement now. We're asking for that after elementary school 18, elementary school 19, which we would like to do, start on next year. And then to be followed by the Hartwood replacement.
So you want 18, 19 replacement.
18, 19, and 20, 21.
18 and 19, new schools. Well, yes, yes, that is what we sadly came to because Drew was our number one. But we recognize that this demand, the strain on our elementary schools. But we recognize that this demand, the strain on our elementary schools cannot survive unless we get some, some relief. So that's what we're asking for. We are not asking for the ninety-three million for Drew right now, we're asking for the fifty-eight point eight times two with probably some, you know, significant reduction.
Where would Drew move to?
We're looking, we're looking possibly, we, we certainly don't have any decisions at this point, but we have been talking about building the new Rising Star on the Drew campus and moving Drew over to the Rising Star campus.
On the same property.
The same property.
So if we group the, the projects...
Like you get Stafford asked.
So we wouldn't need any new land for either of those two properties.
I'm just thinking of how they could, because obviously the CIP has the cost of the ten year, yeah, how the order would look.
So you, what the, the school board is advocating for is grouping projects because of, obviously, meeting the capacity needs as a priority, but also making some logical sense to your, some of your construction. So eighteen, nineteen together, followed by Hartwood replacement because it's a similar project and we need the seat capacity, Drew and Rising Star, those would be the top priorities in terms of school construction. Grouping Drew and Rising Star together as a project that would work well together, the elementary school projects also working well together in terms of what you could, could save in terms of, of resources.
So, I mean, that doesn't seem ridiculous. Go ahead.
I have a follow-up question to that. Can you attach the fiscal year, you're trying to get this done because it's...
There are a plethora of issues across the county. And what I hear more and more is people who even are typically more fiscally conservative saying, "We don't mind a tax increase, we just want to know where's our money going? That it's being cared for and we're doing the right things with it." And it's, you know, in my opinion, really past time that we take care of our children. They're not being taken care of like they could be, like they should be. It's not even could be, it's should be. So I just wanted to share that and I would encourage any of my colleagues who maybe doubt that our constituents are in favor of increases to deal with this issue, to please speak with more of them because people are struggling and stressed. It's impacting our children's personal lives that they come home stressed about seeing the things that teachers are enduring trying to adapt and the density of the classrooms. And mental health keeps coming back again and again as an issue, it is a huge issue, and this is impacting our children's mental health, that's all.
Supervisor Allen?
I'm going to go first, it's a school board first one, so you can then ask my question.
Okay. Thank you Ms. Venet- Ms. Guy, Dr. Chase, and they'd like to make some comments and then I'd like to ask Dr. Warner if she has any as well.
Sure.
Ms. Guy?
One of the things that Ms. Halsted said is, "I came to Stafford because the schools were great," and that's past tense, and that's a fact. They were great. We can't say that now. We have great educators and our students are great, but our schools really aren't nice. I was gonna say something else, but this is a different meeting, so they aren't awesome. And it's just like, you know, Supervisor Venet always, I always notice your shoes, you wear attractive shoes and so, but put a rock in it all day. You can still do your job, you're still gonna be a rock star, but that sucks. And that's how it is going to school here right now. Because you've got students who were smushed in, you know, I think a lot of our community respectfully conflated COVID issues and learning loss. We've been having a learning loss in Stafford for a decade, by one or two points in the SOLs for a decade, and a mom kept saying that for a decade and no one listened to me. So now you throw in COVID, because we could see with Arlington and Fairfax, the school systems that we were close to, we saw the scores that they got, and then we see the scores we got. Being in overstuffed classrooms does bring your test scores down. It does make you have more higher rate of discipline problems, which is what we're seeing right now. Alyssa says the kids are feral. I think the kids don't even realize how pissed they are because they are crammed in. And then the teachers and the educators, they're crammed in too. Mr. English said no one speaks to him about trailers. You're not on the school board. I hear it all the time. And I'm tired of hearing it because that's the best we can do right now. The educators don't like trailers either because you have to have safety concerns for these kids. When they have to use the restroom, someone's gotta be there to open the door, someone's gotta be there to close the door. If the door stays open, we don't know who's coming in the schools, and then that's on us. But is it on us because we can't keep the schools the way they're supposed to be? We shouldn't have trailers. So I'm just asking, no, here's what I think. I think that when someone said, you know, "Sell it to our constituents," yeah, I'm not gonna sell it to my constituents either, I'm going to lead them and explain to them why this is important and they need to get on board, right? And I think that's what we need to do. I think for us, our school board, we're trying to keep a really concise message, we're trying to say the same thing, and we're like super different, I mean, look at me and Alyssa, but we're gonna say the same thing, and I think whatever comes out of this, we need to all say the same thing, even if it's, eh, you know, I wish this had happened, but this is what we're gonna do. And that, I think, will move mountains for our constituents as opposed to just, you know, saying, parroting the same thing, "This is what I want, this is what I want." Well, this is what we're gonna do. That's what I think. Thank you.
So we'll have trailers at, I think, Falmouth and Park Ridge next year and probably Stafford L as well, so just heads up on that. And I also wanted to mention, you talk about wants versus needs. I've given up some pretty big ones. I want Drew rebuilt. I had a meeting today, Drew, we had in our budget $4.5 million to replace the HVAC system at Drew. It will cost 20 million to replace the HVAC system at Drew, okay? I was told we can't get parts now to fix things at Drew because they are so old. So I have actually given quite a lot by saying, "I'll have the Hartwood replacement before Drew gets rebuilt." So I've given, and we need to get this fixed. It is not fair to the children who attend Drew to be attending under the situation that they are. So I hope that we understand that this board has given quite a lot already. Thank you.
Dr. Warner? She's on me.
I'm going to add, Chair. Here, we're listening to this, and I appreciate Ms. Venet worrying about us not being thoughtful in our wants and needs. And I appreciate the fact that it does increase our tech, that's just my attache pair, my husband's, Emma, that feels like. I also appreciate the fact that I'm looking at schools that are over capacity and places where we have space, we can't necessarily utilize that space because, I don't know if you've noticed it or not, but there's a transportation problem in Stafford. And to try to move students from one area of the county to another often produces logistic problems that make that quite a challenge, and you can put students on a bus for one hour or longer, and it's just, it's not practical. We have looked at our CIP very, very thoughtfully. We have relied on Mr. White's numbers, his assessments of where work is happening. We have triaged and tried to prioritize. And what we discovered and what we decided as a board, if the key priorities are to leave seats, leave capacity, we need to alleviate the overcrowding in the southern section to take pressure off of Falmouth and Rocky Run and County Way and certainly Hartford. We need to alleviate the overcrowding in the southern region where Fort Hills Grove's that shit is. And then we still need to replace Hartford, we still need to replace Drew, and we still need to replace Rising Star. I don't know if you've been in Rising Star, but it's really a pretty poor condition for the place that we have some of our youngest and most vulnerable students. So I think that the school board has been very thoughtful and we've all made concessions. Ms. Halsted made concessions in moving Hartford's rebuild down. Dr. Chase has made concessions in moving Drew Middle School down. And we have to thread a fine line on Drew Middle School because if we reduce the capacity too much, we can't offer all the programs and opportunities to those middle school students. So we are constantly shuffling students in that section so that we can still make sure that we're meeting our academic needs. People have been yelling for years that we need more schools, and I think it's just that now it's reached a crescendo. We haven't had a new elementary school for capacity, as Ms. Venet pointed out, since 2006. We haven't built a new school for capacity since we built Shirley High in 2009. And now all those, all those issues are coming home to roost and we have to address them. So I think the school board has looked very carefully at what we need. What we need today to take some pressure off so that we can make, so we can provide the schools infrastructure that our students need so that they can find their rest. And we are working very hard to do that. And we would appreciate you considering the changes that we've recommended, building elementary schools simultaneously, moving Hartford rebuild down. We've started construction on the high school, that's going to be Truman, Hashra, Halls, high schools in that region, Alveer, Stafford, and it will help really with the consolidation of attendance zones around all of our high schools. These are the things that we need, and I hope that you will consider that as in your board. Thank you.
Is that everybody?
I think Alyssa has one.
I just wanna make one, I just wanna make one though.
Comment. So I think when you're looking, when we're looking at all this and we're looking at our kids and we're looking at safety and all that other stuff, we can all argue the difference between the physical safety of a building vice the, you know, the safety, the actual safety, the mental health safety of what's going on. So as we sit and consider what we're going to talk about publicly with our constituents and the people who asked us to sit here and debate these harder topics is, how can we get you to work with us as well so that we could, because I do still see that for school board meetings and for supervisor meetings, I know it's hard to get people to show up in public, but I think we do all need to be more actively involved in, I don't know if it's website or social media or whatever, but really getting more information out to the folks to let them understand why these conversations are happening and so that the information is present for them, ever present for them. It's not just a tax increase because it's Tuesday, it's, okay, we saw that coming. So we need to really kind of inform folks, give them a little bit of the prospectus of what's gone on, how many redistricts have happened, and some of the harder, there are a lot of hard facts to swallow right now about what's happening inside of our school buildings. It's not, you know, just Stafford County, it is unfortunately a pretty pervasive problem across the country. But at the end of the day, I think that we have the people in place to make those changes and adjustments, we just have to stay open to what that actually means. And if it means a bond referendum and sort of helping people understand how we're gonna go and do this and what the impact is, then I think that we need to make that a part of the everyday conversation that we're having, not waiting for meetings to come up, not expecting that people are gonna show up to the meeting to speak directly to us, but finding more ways to really just get education and information out there to the public because it is hard. And as a person who mostly sat on her couch and took popcorn and watched stuff before I decided to run and was like, "Where'd that decision come from?" You know, like, that's crazy. Armchair quarterback for years as well, right? But I now see in speaking with people and understanding more, I always joke and say I have a gymnastics, I have a office at the Parks and Recs, Stafford Royals, because I'm there like three nights a week with my daughter and everyone's always there coming up and chit-chatting with me or whatever, but it's really a great place to be in touch with the public and hear what they have to say. And through that, I've really seen where some of the holes are in our messaging with our public and in not getting enough information out to them so that it is easy to create a division over a tax increase or whatever by saying to people, like, "We're gonna soften the blow because, like, here's what's happened, here's what's happening," instead of just, "Hey, we're voting on a tax hike now again." And it's, "Oh, by the way, because we know," but people who are considering moving to Stafford, they're looking too. They're gonna go do their due diligence and they're not gonna find it. So it just, I think it behooves us all to increase the amount of messaging we do with the public too.
Okay, that's, everybody on the school board's gotten a chance to speak.
I know, I know. I know, you have a question, and then I just wanted to circle back with Andrea to see if you were able to kind of do that math quickly.
I'm sorry, that Dr. Taylor did the math.
I don't know, I was relying on his math. I was assuming somebody did it.
But to do, to, like they said, to replace Elementary School 19 and Hartford in that order, that negligible cost, and to do the 19, Hartford and Drew, you're looking at...
And Rising.
And Rising, yeah, you're looking at 58. My math skills are great without a computer. 180, 260, 270, probably 330,000.
And we gotta look at the years that they're opening too because that will change the total cost because some of the dates you have here are later years, so they're escalated. So by bumping them up, you could literally drop 10, 20 million dollars on some of these projects by doing them earlier.
So, I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were doing while we were talking, is coming up with the new, the five, what was it, the five?
In Andrea's defense, that's gonna take more than just like 30 seconds.
I know, but just kind of giving us a high level explanation of how that would sort of change the CIP, but that's fine because I know we don't have that much time left. So maybe that's sort of a surrogate follow-up is that we need to circulate out to both boards basically how that changes this slide because I'm assuming if we wanted to stick with the same $439 million cost over 10 years, there will be things on this slide that maybe would change essentially to be able to bump up the other items. So then the school board could review that and see what those changes look like and then we could take a look at that. And then the next step from there, after the board sort of looked at that, just because I know last year we had, you guys had a new board, we had a new board, so it was, the budget kind of came very, very hard and fast. Last year is in our next meeting in March, we will be pretty much halfway, well, at least one-third of the way through our budget. We'll have a much better idea of the track that we're going, the tax rate we've identified based on all the budget, the other budget costs and needs that are in there as to what kind of tax rate we're looking at. And then there should be some board direction on whether or not this, that we want to take all of these items and send them to a bond referendum and what that would look like. I know Andrea touched on that a little bit today, just sort of the timing of it, but what that messaging would look like, where the board has agreed, because we have to agree, does it come off personal property tax, does it come off real estate tax? How would we do that to be able to educate the community on what those tax increases would be? And that's where we would make sure that you guys knew that stuff too because I agree, the worst thing that could happen is you guys are saying one thing and then we're saying another thing and then nothing, they're not, nobody's gonna know what's the truth and what's going on.
This is my newness, okay? So I'm not apologizing for it because I'm learning as I go. You just said, and I'm sorry.
No, not you, it's her.
I'm confused, because you said, "If you put all these things to the bond referendum," right? Which I understand that process, but if it doesn't pass, we still need seats, then what do we do as two boards?
So then we have to address it after that because the community has basically just given us guidance that they don't want to build these schools and use their tax, they don't want their taxes to increase to build these schools. So that's, that's the offset. Then we have to figure out, okay, how do we work through this to add the seats without doing what the community doesn't want? So, yeah, so Supervisor Allen is patiently waited.
No, I'm okay, I'm not, I'm...
No, she's trying to, she's trying to do a Marine on us.
Supervisor...
You're not Marine.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ms. Guy had a very salient point that I was getting to, actually I was getting to two things to move us forward because so that we're not waxing lurkly for the next 20 minutes about this. I would like for Ms. McLendon to give us a timeline of what we will need to have in place to get the bond referendum ready because that's a tight window. We have to have a, I believe it's a deadline when we have to have the paperwork.
Can you just have a slide on that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, so that we know, but...
And this came from Ms. McLendon's office?
Yeah. But I meant like before April, do we need to have something else? I know the April, but I'm saying before April, do we need to have anything ready?
Madam Chairman, I can speak to that. The only thing that's required by state codes is that the circuit court has to order a special election for the referendum, maybe one day before the election. I'm recommending the board make your decision no later than the end of July to allow the circuit court time two, three weeks to put the order in place. Beyond that, the circuit court rates of order will work with communications to make sure the communications regarding the bond referendum goes out because our state code requires the voters to, what has to be included in that information.
And, okay, thank you, Ms. McLendon. Now, and we're both gonna be working on the language together as the board is gonna determine the language of the referendum?
The board determines the language of the referendum, but there's educate, there's, so when we did the bond referendum for the roads, the actual language on the bond referendum was very like easy and it, and the board said, "We want these specific roads mentioned in the referendum." So I'm sure that this board will say, you know, "The high-level projects," they're not gonna say, "And then replace the windows to this building." You know, they're just gonna say, "These are the things." But I think outside of the actual bond referendum language, we work with both of our communications teams to explain what specifically is happening, what the timeline is, and where the money's coming, like what the offset impact is to the taxpayer. That is something we didn't do a very good job of the first time in 2019 is, and then our board ended up fighting over how it was gonna get paid for because they really did not identify how it would get paid for. And then when people realized it was their personal property taxes, they were like, "Well, I wouldn't have voted for that then." And so...
14 million.
I think we have to be very, very clear where that's coming from, and then it helps hold the board, the Board of Supervisors accountable in the following years because you're like, "Wait a minute, this passed at 70% and they knew that their real estate tax was gonna go up, whatever percentage is explained based on the projects that we select." Supervisor Young? Okay, she has to do her last question.
Ms. Guy said, "I think, yeah, even the public tells us no, I think we shouldn't wait necessarily and wait for that result, we should already have a plan B ready." Because as they said, even if the public tells us no, we still have to build facilities for kids. And so I think we need to, I think we need to have simultaneous kind of plans in some capacity, it'll come out of work, but we have to be ready to pivot.
I think there's an altern, like you say, here's the bond referendum. Now, keep in mind that some people who don't like to spend money might say, "Oh, well, and they don't have," because there's a lot of Stafford County people who don't have kids. They might say, "Well, if there's the alternative that you're working on," they might say, "Oh, well, they can still build it and not have to pay more in the future," then you have to be really cognizant of what that looks like. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Young?
So with the bond referendum, I think we talked about it, is this something that we need to talk to the school board about? Like what kind? So different kinds, like where we put like a firehouse in a school on the specific, in the specific district? Because people will accept the school, if they say, "Oh, we're getting a school," they're gonna vote for it. But if you put, like say for example, you put everywhere the same school, they're like, "I don't wanna vote for this one, this is not in my district." So in order to get it for the individuals of that particular district to be all good for it, we need to devise a plan of having different types in the different areas.
So I think we have to stick with what the school's asking. The five things.
I'm just saying the messaging, like identify, for example, 18 is gonna go to Hartford and maybe we'll get more Hartford support.
Oh, yeah, you have to do that, I think you have to.
Some, I don't think that we've always done that though, I mean, from what I've noticed in the past, but yeah, thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, so that's really important and that's, you have to tell your voters in a bond issue exactly where the money is gonna be spent because the investors that are purchasing those bonds have expectations. But then we as a board, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. McLendon, but we could have fire stations and the schools all together, but if we have certain things that we want to use the money for, for a fire levy, that's gonna be a separate issue. Those are not gonna be the same. So voters would actually go into the ballot box and they would vote on two different things. We may not, I don't know what the board wants to do, we haven't really talked about this, we may not want to do a fire levy tax at the same time we're doing a general obligation bond that might include fire stations and schools. And when we did our transportation bond, one of the big things that we did is we did a big map of the county and we highlighted all the roads that we wanted to improve to make sure that everybody in the county was getting something, you know, in their particular area, something that they would say, "Okay, this is worth it for me." As it relates to education, the number, and I did this for a living in California, on general obligation bond issues, the number one thing you have to convince voters that do not have any children in school anymore is that your home value will continue to be maintained if you pay for schools. You have to pay it forward. And it's all about the messaging and whatever consultant we hire to make sure that helps us with this is of paramount importance. Because if the message is not told correctly, it's gonna go down in flames. Spotsylvania's had two or three general obligation bonds over the years and they all passed. Their swimming pool this past year didn't pass, so, and they had different things on. But there's a lot of research out there on bond issues that we can look at.
Madam Chairman, I want to go back to the Hartford rebuild that you've approved for today. And we, it's for now, correct? You've approved us moving forward on the Hartford rebuild. We have requested and we will continue to request that you substitute that for Elementary School 18. Elementary School 18 will give us 964 seats, we'll get a few hundred with Hartford, but we desperately need Elementary School 18. So that has nothing to do with a bond referendum. But if we don't get your approval, we can't move forward with 18.
Can I ask you a follow-up question, I think, Ms. Light? Okay, Hartford rebuild, where is that on our CIP currently? Is that 23 or 24?
23.
20, so like right...
Starting in 23, correct?
Starting in 23, which is, what fiscal year are we in right now?
23.
23, so...
Yeah, exactly.
So how would we, I'm asking these questions to get to a point. So how would we be able to interchange that? Would that require, that's gonna require an action of the board to change the CIP. I mean, is that even possible? Do we have to do a public hearing for that? What would that look like?
Absolutely, I think the board could change the direction of the CIP as far, as a public hearing because we've had a public hearing on VPSA and what that is going to look like. We'd have to work with county attorney to determine if we need to amend our, have a new public hearing before we amended the bond borrow.
So, and I'm only one board member, so I can't speak for the entire board, and this is just a work session, so we don't ever vote in work sessions, but would anybody in this, on the board have an issue with Andrea following up with this, with us on this under new business? And I don't know if you could get it done by the 13th, but we have a board meeting next Tuesday because then we could roll out into the January, because it's gonna take 30 days to advertise a public hearing.
Well, that's fine, we haven't, we're working on the specs, the ed specs for the building, but we want to be ready to go ahead and get started on looking at a contractor for it. We have to obviously acquire the land, but once we know that we can build Elementary 18, then we can move forward with that because Elementary 18 is not going to be in the same location as a Hartford rebuild would, even though Elementary 18 is gonna provide some relief to Hartford.
And then when we have that, if we could schedule that with a closed session to talk to the schools about location, because I think we all know where it's gonna go.
We will make ourselves available.
So, but I'm just, I guess I'm asking for feedback from my board, is that the direction that we want to go? Yes.
I'm good. One, two.
All right, so we can, if you could just add it as new business, just to discuss it, see what we actually have to do to make it, and then the public and you guys will also see, like, because if we...
Madam Chair, and I just want to...
So, hold on, hold on. So anything that, because this is all now before the board, anything that one board member will get will go to the entire board? So it would go to Randy?
We will send it to the county administrator, our superintendent will send it, and of course, it will be sent to us at the same time.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Supervisor Gary.
Sure, I just wanted to point this out since this is the discussion we're having right now, that sometimes it is fiscally conservative to raise taxes because of things like this. Right, so I just want to point that out, and that's the discussion I've been having with a lot of people, and many of my constituents understand and are saying this is what we want instead of kicking the can down the road, so it's just, you know, useful to throw that out there. Thank you.
In these, these Elementary 18 and 19, we can list the schools it will relieve because it is literally, and how many districts?
It will relieve five magisterial districts directly and one additional one indirectly.
I'm sorry, hold on, there's way too much talking. What did you say?
Six of the seven magisterial districts will be positively impacted by the construction of Elementary School 18 and 19, five directly and a sixth indirectly. The one district that will not be positively impacted by 18 or 19 is actually the Rockhill District.
We're all voting no.
But the other districts would be positively impacted, the peripheral district that would be...
I would actually, I don't agree with that. Because when we have to redistrict, we push west. And if you look at the capacity issues we're having in Aquia and the capacity issues we're having in Garrisonville, it will just mean pushing west and Rockhill trailers will end up with trailers as well.
So we'll have an indirect act.
So it will indirectly, well, indirect, direct... So it will indirectly, well, indirect, direct impact to, I feel like, every school.
So I, I just want an explanation, did you say five directly impacted and six in addition to the five?
Yeah.
So total 11?
A six, no, a six then addition.
How many survivors do you think there are?
And Ms. Sigmund is right, yeah. It actually will have an impact on all seven magisterial districts.
No, I thought you meant the location, because we do have 17 elementary schools. So I just wanted an explanation of what you meant when you said five and then six.
You said magisterial districts, which is...
Yeah, but then he said five and he didn't say in addition.
I have another new person question.
I'm sorry, I'm using...
My, my, this is just an idea and you can tell me it's why it's wrong, but don't you, maybe, should we meet more than just twice a year? Or this is only my second time.
So we do, we have the school board three-on-three, which was, that was an extension, that was how, we were supposed to bring things like this to the school board three-on-three to be able to discuss and then the respective boards bring it back to their board and be able to discuss that. And we talked about doing those quarterly or bimonthly, I can't remember what we ended up agreeing on. And, and doing that, I think, I mean, we have a lot of meetings, like you guys have your board meetings, we have a lot.
I know, I'm not, I'm not discrediting all the work y'all do, like, trust me, I'm not, I'm not thinking you don't do anything, right?
Yeah.
Or you don't meet a lot. But, and maybe at those three-on-three, which I know for a while, but there was COVID and then it was hard for y'all to get together and so maybe they didn't happen, but maybe potentially at the three-on-three, you guys can get updated, what do you call it? Updated attendance or whatever? My, my brain, I'm having a senior moment.
And that's where...
Enrollment, thank you.
Those meetings would be very beneficial if we talked about things like we talked about today. Sometimes people ask for things on the agenda that really are not useful and not beneficial of our time and that's why they get canceled. When there's things that are put on there just to, you know, for politics or for gamesmanship, then we tend to not want to participate. So I think if we have robust discussions like we have been, you know, at the last meeting, we had talked about attendance zones, we talked in-depth about that and where some of the growth in the county was happening. And then we talked about proffer changes and the schools are going to help us come up with where kids actually are because we've, as a board, we've been saying for a long time that when the developers come and say, oh, we think that this apartment complex is going to generate 12 kids, and we're looking at them with four eyes like, you're a liar. But we've never had good school data to show us, no, this, they said it was going to generate 12, it actually generated 112. And so then we have to be able to change our, and we're actually, it's perfect timing because we're in the middle of redoing all of our proffer fees and transportation impact fees and everything. So we're trying to change all of that, but that's where you guys finally have good data and you've not had that in the past that has been able to help us sort of change that information. So, so that was the last meeting that we had and it was very, it was very good use of our time.
Madam Chairman, I just have one suggestion, speaking of data. If, if you all want to send your, your packages that you're going to send to your board to us with respect to air documents that are in there, we could update them, make sure you have the most accurate information.
Oh, like today, yeah.
Because this, this was, you know, superintendent's proposal, this was absolutely the superintendent's proposal, but since the time that was generated, the school board adopted a CIP. So we can try to help you, that would be between the administrator and the superintendent if, 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 if that's something you're interested in.
I, I think we would very much appreciate that because I think we need the accurate information.
I just have one more comment, Ms. Chairwoman Healy. I, I know that when we, budget season, we have the superintendent's budget and then we have the chair budget and that confused, when I was on the board, it confused the county board. So are we changing that where it's, there's going to be one budget?
Yeah, well, the state law requires the superintendent to present the school board with the superintendent's proposed budget. Then the school board considers that budget and adopts a budget.
Okay, just...
But, but that's, that's a legal requirement, so that's nothing we can change. But I think what happened last year, you're absolutely right, there was confusion because people were talking about the superintendent's budget as the school board's budget, but it's not the school board's budget until we go through our public hearings and, you know, we, we adopt it.
Just make sure it's clear.
That's, that's the reality, isn't it?
We adopt our own budget is what, oh, yeah. We, we're not obligated to accept the superintendent's budget.
It's the same thing on our side. It's a starting point. He provides us a budget and then we change everything we want to change and then it's our budget. Okay.
No one is saying, the county administrator's budget, like they're saying, it's his budget.
Yeah, that's, that's...
The school board budget's period. It's not his budget anymore, his budget, it passed, it's dead, we got ours. And that's what we need to go off of? It's our budget, not his. His was great, ours is great.
Well, then don't make it more, then don't make it more, make it less and then we'll be able to do that. Okay, so I think that pretty much wraps it up. Does anybody, did you have a, really quick, because we're over time?
I have one thing that for Mr. Cohen that he just texted me.
Okay, hold on, guys, we're not done yet.
So Mr. Cohen had to leave for a family emergency. This is from him and he's just wondering if we want to have some kind of a subcommittee of three members from each board or two members as it relates to preparing items for a bond issue. Anyway, maybe that's something we can talk about later.
I think that the school board three-on-three would be the best place to do that.
Okay, I'm just relaying the message, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for this productive discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, it'll, we, it's a brand new one next January.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Okay, meeting adjourned.